Okay. Good evening, this is the Cohasset Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. It's now seven PM, we are in session, and we'll open with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okey dokey. Diane will join us shortly, she's trying to make her way down here from Watertown, so that could be awhile. Public comments, from the public. Hand of the audience will show that no one's here, other than our finance director. If we have any, we'll return to that. Selectment update.
Hi.
Aye.
I've got some sad news, Mary Kennedy has passed away, she rang the bells at Saint Stephen's.
She was at Carolyn?
Carolyn, yeah.
Oh.
And also, this morning, I just heard Kitty Ripley passed away. She was a teacher at Deer Hill, my daughter, first year my daughter had her.
Oh.
And her husband Roger Fell broke a leg, so they're nervous of the... Too bad.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
It's been tough, hasn't it?
Yeah, I believe she was a wonderful teacher, she was fifth grade, I think.
Well, may I suggest that we have a moment of silence for both?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything further?
Well, I just, there was a terrific drug and alcohol committee meeting last week, it was very, very good. And actually, one of them, Ms. Cope, and one of them who was in charge of Cope, she was actually at the MMA conference, we heard here, and I talked to her afterwards, and the MMA have called her back to be involved in spring panels.
Right.
So...
I've heard, I heard good things about that.
Yeah, it was very good, it was excellent, excellent.
Karen?
Um, no, I had a question for Chris. We received the notice from the Shellfish, and I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't having any... Of course, the boats are all iced in anyway, but in regard to our lobster in?
Uh, you mean the...
I don't think it does, but I just wanted to make sure.
I don't believe so.
It's, it's out to the state border, so...
Well, there is a... Let's, let's follow up after.
Okay.
All right. Kevin?
The water enterprise goes out periodically for bids for who's to be, who's gonna be the operator of the water company, so they're in the process of doing that now, they've got four or five bids coming in. So to make a long story short, each committee, including the selectmen, need to appoint one person to evaluate the bids. And I think all the other committees have done so, other than ourselves. Karen and I have the liaisons to the Water Commission, I have the water, and so we discussed it briefly and decided that I could go, I'd go ahead and be the person who goes and does that evaluation. She's done it in the past, and this would be, you know, a wonderful experience for me, I'm sure, so if it's okay with the board, whether you wanna take a vote on it, or just, just as one liaison, I'll be one of those that evaluates the five water commissions.
I don't have an issue with it, but if it's, if it's a vote, can we take this up under topics not reasonably expected?
Sure.
Okay, and, but otherwise, I can't see...
Do it either way, either way.
Well, I'd rather not bring it up under select miscomments, that's all.
No, 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 yeah, yeah.
Okay? But Kevin, yeah, absolutely, we, we do need to make the point, we get, get moving with it.
Yeah, the, the, the bids are in the nineteenth, so...
Okay. All right, so...
First box is right there, so you've gotta just...
What is the first one?
Yeah, it's in that box.
So, uh, just as a reminder, in the event that Diane doesn't get here, just throw up a flare in case I miss it, to bring this back around as topics not reasonably anticipated.
Yeah.
All right. And as for me, my, my only comment is a nod, in its entirety, to the town staff. It was almost like insult to injury this past weekend, with, you know, still one more storm, although it did seem a bit of a letdown, to have less than twenty inches. I, I know you're going to get, get onto some of the particulars, but I, in no particular order, I think the town owes a debt of gratitude to everybody involved in emergency management and public safety in particular. The communication coming out of the Police Department and through the Fire Department has been, has been fabulous. For one, recognizing the, I for one, for recognizing the extent that the DPW has to take on with, with our road network, and, you know, the amounts of machinery that we have, I'm amazed that we, you know, we can actually continue to operate after events, continuous events like we've had. So I just wish to, to say a hearty thank you for the organization, and the energy expended, so.
Last time we watched the staff, thank you.
Okay, that's it. Here on to event applications. Do we have, do we have any, are we anticipating having any of the volunteers here?
I was under the impression that we were, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong.
For the MS walk, yes, for the wedding, yes, not for the one day.
Yeah, not for the one day liquor license.
Okay, yeah, let's, if everybody's amenable to that, let's go to the one day liquor license for Saint Anthony's first. All right. Floor's open, any comments?
Other than it's always a great party and a great time, and...
Just for the, for the folks happening to listen in, this is a request for a one day liquor license for Saint Anthony's Parish for the celebration of Saint Patrick's Day party, which, if you don't know, and if by chance you may not, this is one of the quietly kept holy days of obligation within the Catholic Church.
Or even if you're Irish.
Well, even if you're not. Saint Patrick's Day and Easter are holy days of obligation, Christmas too. Okay, so the request is for Saturday, March twenty-one, six to nine PM. If there are no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
One second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'm gonna be dancing around here for a few minutes.
Um, Mary is here with the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just hear it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so we'll cir-, yes, we'll circle back to the other two event applications, it is seven ten. Mary, if you don't mind jumping into it?
I have, no.
Let's, let's go.
Things are pretty much as they were last month, and they were looking good. When I wrote this, the snow and ice budget was looking good, but now it's a disaster.
As, as you wrote this...
It was only about twenty-six thousand in the hole, and now it's about, it's looking close to eighty thousand.
Okay.
Eighty?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have all the...
Eight or eighty?
Eighty, we don't really have all the requisitions in, so it's hard to tell.
Eighty, and we're halfway through the winter.
Yeah, so hopefully this'll be...
Sorry to bring that up.
Snow until December.
You just arrayed some shit.
Well, we're supposed to be deliberating on these things.
We had a storm then, and years ago, and no electricity in the town.
All things considered, it could be worse.
Yes, yes.
You wanna, you wanna take us through the highlights?
Oh, yeah, the highlights is local receipts are, they're down a little bit over last year, but since we budgeted conservatively, we're still gonna be meeting our local revenue estimate easily. So I anticipate we're definitely gonna have as much as two hundred thousand at least.
Okay.
That's what we have now. Expenditures is still going much the same as they were, except for snow and ice, police overtime is still running high.
Could you, could you get into that, you or Chris, get into that for just a second, with respect to the continuing impetus for the overtime budget on police side?
Oh, well, I, you might know better than I why it's spreading so high. Must be people helping.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been a combination of things. One of them is that the additional officer that was budgeted has been in the academy, so he's, he actually just graduated last weekend successfully. So he's joining the force, I think he joined the force yesterday officially. I mean, he was on the force, but he's now on patrol, so that helped. And we had a retirement at the beginning of the year, so, so we were not just down one, we were effectively down two for the whole month of January. So it's been, I, I know they're doing everything they can, and I'm hoping that it will get, I'm hoping that from here on out, obviously, the weather has been a problem as well, most recently, but I'm hoping that with the staffing coverage, that it'll be a little bit better.
Okay, no, I just, thanks, that, that does help with the review. So it's, we're still down a man, a full-time...
And we actually, someone just is either, is either just gone off or is about to go off, so the next fill-in, the next, the next man on, on the list, the next candidate has been, has been, is heading to the academy, but it'll be four months, I believe, before he comes back, so it's gonna be a little bit... And we're making, we're making preparations for the next one, just in case.
Okay.
How many active officers do we have?
You have to excuse me, I'm a little slow today, I've spent a long day. I wanna say we have twenty-four.
We have, we have a man?
No, no, that's not correct. This is awful.
The point, the point that I was getting at, we do seem to come to this like every year. And I know we've discussed, or heard mention of it before, maybe adding...
Well, we did, so what happened is last year we did...
So we did, we just haven't got that effectuated yet?
No, because...
Because he's at the academy.
He has been, he was hired.
So we did, yeah.
And then he had to go to the academy, and he had to wait for a slot, a slot was assigned, and then he's at the academy for an extended period of time.
Okay, so we are, yeah.
He's not graduated, but now another gentleman has retired.
Right, so we'll be looking for someone else.
So we actually have, another one's, another person I've signed off, and the person's now heading for the academy, but you can only, they only can start when there's a spot, and again, I haven't talked to the chief of...
So once those are through, we'll have an additional officer that we haven't had in the last two or three years.
Yes, yes, so by...
So we'll be able to maybe have lesser overtime, have a lot of patrol.
That's the plan, by, by year's end, we, fiscal year's end, we should have fully implemented the upgraded number of staff. And I apologize, I've been, I've been actually had fire on the brain today, not police, so...
It's quite all right.
For all of that, though, your hair looks marvelous.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, but we're so with that, that's the...
Thank you.
Sewers looking good, they're meeting all their revenue estimates, they're a little bit up over last year, and expenditures, they still are, are well within their budget for expenditures. Water collections are up, they're much higher than over last year. Their third quarter commitment went out, it wasn't much more than last year's third quarter commitment, so I think we've seen a big boost in revenue, the commitment side. We're probably gonna have plenty of water this spring, so I don't... Their expenditures, they're really, they are, I'm not anticipating really any turnbacks on expenditures, so hopefully, though, they will at least meet their budget, and I'm hoping even more, because they do need some retain earnings.
That is a sizable increase on collections, so, and if that's a, if that's a...
Yeah, I should, you know what, I should, maybe I should have broken this out more, the collections, basically, some of it is the fifty-three thousand they received from last year's bill, so that's an exception to the five hundred and thirty...
True.
I think with the report that came out from the water department, I didn't know, you might have gotten it all, so did Brenda said they were up three percent?
Yeah.
Their consumption was up, the, the amount of cubic feet they committed the first two quarters was much higher over last year, so that's why, that's...
Also, too, their, their debt roll-off, doesn't that, you know...
That's not gonna have any effect to...
Not this year, but isn't it like in the next year?
Next year, and even more so, the thirty, what, years out?
Fifty or sixty thousand dollars after this year, so, you know, that's a favorable going forward.
Well, no, it really isn't, because I'll beat the dead horse again, that that is money that was promised to go back to the ratepayers.
Yep. Well, in, 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 in reduced fees.
In redu-, yeah, I'm not, not a refund, no, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, we all take that, but, but no, reduction, the rates were promised, although it was not a formal vote, as the chair of the Water Commission pointed out, it was a very sacred promise, on my part anyway, that as the debt rolled down, the capital recovery fee would also be reduced.
Yeah, it, it shouldn't have, if, if that carries through, it would not work to bolster retained earnings.
Correct. Right, right, that's, yeah, that's...
Chris, on that topic, what's the status of the rate study?
Company's been retained, Woodard and Kern is retained, and they've, it was actually kickoff meeting...
Last week?
Two weeks ago, less than two weeks ago. One of the meetings was able to take place despite the snow.
Yeah.
It was a very good meeting, and they're gonna continue to have meetings, and they'll be a public, more of a public forum at some point too, as they come up with a, come later in the process, so... But they're done, and expedited, they, they, the commission's goal is to have this wrapped, so they get to town meeting with a proposal, so we're gonna have a placehold, I think there is a placehold on there.
There is a placehold.
There weren't for rates, and it just says that, because we don't know what they're gonna propose.
What's gonna happen, sure.
So, but that, that's where we are, that, so that has, that has started, so... And I, I believe there's a giant data dump that was given to them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so they got, they asked for a lot of information about the town, and they had all of that, so...
Correct, yeah. Now, obviously, there was no apparent conflict of interest with them.
No, 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 this is a different branch of the operation, and they're following a standards that are set up by the state. So it, it, they, it's, it's not, yeah, it doesn't affect the, but it doesn't affect the amount of money that goes to the company anyway. The rates just go to the, to maintain the operation, so, and besides, they may not even maintain the contract.
They still have to bid, yeah, I think.
Well, I mean, the rates are be coming out by the company that has the contract, who's funded by the rates.
Yeah, but... They don't know yet, well, I mean, the procurement process is in place now, so they really can't fix their rates for what they, you know, they're not gonna be... The rate study's gonna come out after the, the decameron's done, so...
Well, and they don't set the rates, I mean, they, they...
No, the rates are set by town meeting anyways.
By town meeting, yeah.
So, I don't think there's any...
But the rate study and the recommendations of the rate study...
It, it's really, it, it's not so much about the rates, it's, it's the philosophy, I think, is really what they're looking at. And they're taking a hard look at operational costs and long-term capital needs.
Capital, I certainly hope is...
Exactly, and again...
Well, that's exactly, that has to be included in the study, what you're...
Because they have significant capital coming forward.
So that, that was actually discussed, so they're, in, in some ways, I mean, again, they made an independent procurement, they actually did go through a process and solicit other quotes, but in, in some ways, they actually know more than anyone anyway, they've been operating the plant, so, you know, I mean... But believe me, we're watching it, Brian was up there, I was up there, and Mary was up there, so we're gonna, we gotta be very active, watching the process.
I was unable to make that first meeting, but hopefully I'll be able to make others.
They'll be...
Oh, they'll be plenty, because there's still, like Chris was saying, it's like a kind of a philosophy too, on how you wanna charge your rates, do you do tear rates, do you do, do you do capital recovery, you know, or flat rate, you do, you know, there's several different ways to look at it. And what you think is fair.
Yeah, go ahead, you can have one. Well, I have a question on the, the budget to actual, on the water.
Yep.
Just because some of the numbers were jumping out, is that, that, that last column, is, is that the percentage?
Yeah.
So I'm looking at this thinking that we're, we're about, whatever, sixty-something percent of the way through the fiscal year. Is that right?
Right.
So the number that jumped out at me was that twenty-one point eight six percent expenditures. So I, is that because there's some big lump payment that's gonna be coming up in the next couple of months?
Well, that's because there was, this one's actually, it goes the opposite of soft rights reports, yeah.
This is the opposite.
Yeah, and it was because they, they had, you know, a lot of substantial debt payments.
Okay, so those were upfront, so really, they've expended eighty-something percent, and that's why, because those are current loaded?
Those are upfront, yeah. Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause if you look at the debt service, it's two point eight million already, they expended twenty-three...
I had asked Mary before, 'cause I was very concerned about some of those figures, and she was explaining to me that the, the debt is paid upfront, so until the water rates are collected, the town is paying the enterprise, pretty much, right now, but then the town gets reimbursed?
Well, yeah, it's all cash, it's just the cash flow, it's just... We don't have, keep a separate checking account, just keep it on the books.
So the excise tax, I know they just went out 'cause I made mine, but is that why they're so low, the current motor excise?
The, the commitments usually don't go out until January, so that's why you haven't seen anything coming in yet, so that'll make a big burst.
Okay, fine.
Did we, did we just go snow and ice?
Yes, we did, yes, we're in the hole.
Clearly, do we know, have any sense of, we're looking good in the January third term.
Um, I think it's, it's about eighty thousand now, so...
In county.
Yeah, it was twenty-six thousand when they first did the reports, and now it looks like it's...
So we're at eighties, we haven't yet done...
Well, I think we're at eight, I don't have everything yet, so, yeah.
Because we haven't been billed for everything, right.
I'm expecting that we're gonna go over the budget with that question.
Oh, we are already over it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how far over, I mean...
It, it wouldn't be unreasonable to expect it to double.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I would think.
How much would that be?
It'd be two fifty.
Yeah.
So where, how, where are we gonna come, come up with that?
Free cash stabilization.
So we have the stabilization fund, this is what it's for?
The town meeting, yes, yeah.
And also, we have the free cash that we want to stay, which is available.
How much do we have in our stabilization fund?
About two point, I have that written down here somewhere. Two point five million right now.
So if we went two fifty, well covered by our stabilization fund, which is good, do we have?
Yes, and that's what it's for, the rainy day, or...
Snowy day?
Snowy.
Is there any chance that they'll get something from the legislature?
I have no idea right now.
Well, the state, um...
They'll give you a training if you live on it.
The state usually...
Yes, you, yes, you have to, yes, yes.
It's highly likely that the state will be aggressively discussing this.
They did, that's why we're in the state.
The state has, has been reported that the state's spent an extra hundred million dollars so far, and but, and they have been supplying services for free to commuters, we've had National Guard, which I'll talk about later, but, so... But I do expect, like last year, we did get some money for snow and ice and pothole, really, pothole repairs where it came in.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I mean, that's, that, by the way, that's what's gonna happen at the end of the process, I mean, freeze thaw, well, it's frozen. Eventually, it'll all thaw, and, and then we'll see where the roads are.
There's a nifty little sinkhole down by the high school, by the way.
There is a few, I mean, and that, that is, I think, ultimately, one of our biggest concerns, especially as we talk about long-term road repairs and stuff. I mean, once all the snow melts, as, as individual homeowners, we're gonna have, you know, a snap that we don't know, because they get eight feet of snow holding them up, we're gonna have flooding issues, and obviously, the roads and everything, so it's gonna be a long...
Brian and Carl and I are gonna sit down next week, and again, Carl has been a little preoccupied, and we've already been talking about amendments to the proposed capital plan, and I think it's, I think it's probably time to talk about a little bit more aggressive road program. We may, you know, which may require us to, to, to flow up some money over a couple of years, but I think we're gonna need to accelerate some spending. I mean, within boundaries, well, I think we have to have that conversation, but it's time to have that conversation. And I do expect that there'll be a lot of aggressive work being done at the state to find some additional funds. But we can't, we can't, we can't count on that, but we also have to make sure our roads are in okay shape. And we also have to make sure we have the equipment necessary to, you know, I think this has been a learning experience. And again, it's also been unprecedented, but it's been a learning experience. The good news is, as you can see, we actually are, our fuel costs are flat or lower, so that's, that's...
Yeah, that's a good thing.
And our electricity cost, even though the rates have gone up, our electricity cost of state stays, so that's been positive.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. Do, what is the status, I was unable to go to the AEC meeting last night, do you know the status of the contracts on the solar?
One of them is sitting right at the desk here for me to sign.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the other one's on its way.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're good, those are actually one of the shortest means, it was fabulous, it was thirty-five miles.
Wow.
So, but it was very productive, so, yeah, in fact, we're gonna talk a little bit about more of that, come back to you.
I'd like to ask a question on rentals. What is, do we rent?
That's the, the museum over there, the library, the child, the children's?
Our World.
Our World, that's what it's called, and I think they turn over, it hasn't been being coded to rent, I have to look into that.
Oh, I see.
I'm hoping they're paying their rent, but that is...
Yeah, well, I, I... Did it get changed? That wasn't on the board at that point.
Yeah, well, I looked at it.
It was a dollar.
No, they're paying more than that, no, they have to pay, they have to pay the costs.
They have to pay the cost, yes, always.
Right, that's what it is, and I know that's something I have a little...
Yeah, yeah, they're not paying that, yeah, it's really a cost.
It's a cost, it's not really a rent.
Are you talking about the rental, under revenues, Martha?
Yeah.
I would think that would be the light keepers, because...
No, 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 it's not that.
It's the, it's the Our World, yeah.
Yeah, it would be.
They get billed quarterly, I believe, monthly or quarterly, I'll have to double check, for the utilities and...
The light keepers has dollars.
I believe that was the museum's relationship too, so anyway...
It got, it got changed last year.
The museums got changed, the museum got changed.
Just to the, to the state, and Chris, I don't know, were you gonna talk about the letter from the Lieutenant Governor?
I can show you the, the lease.
Hello?
So are we, why don't, why don't I try to wrap this up? Are we done with budget?
Well, it just in, in regard to the budget and talking about the state, we received a letter from the Lieutenant Governor regarding their increased efforts in the creation of the cabinet.
Oh, oh, when, when...
At this point...
I think just this morning or yesterday or something.
I think it was an email that we all got. It was an email.
At any rate, it does seem that the governor is making, continuing to make an effort. We'll see if the promises are fulfilled, but it's, at least it's nice to have somebody paying attention to the local municipalities and reaching out and...
From a budgetary perspective, again, I reported to you last month that the first act of the administration was to release that, that chapter ninety, so we had about a hundred and five thousand dollars, oh, we will have access to a hundred and five thousand dollars. And again, there's been a lot of talk about the local cabinet and all that, now, again, I think at this point, the state has been justifiably preoccupied with, we're gonna see snow clearance. I think, I, I think at the MMA, I think those of us who were there most certainly heard the governor speak and the lieutenant governor speak, and I think that there's, the governor having been a selectman in the town, very comparable to this one in North Shore, I think understands the government a different way, but you'll, you know, so we're, we're optimistic, that said, I think there's still, this is, this is yet to be written, the stories are yet to be written.
Right, but the establishment of this cabinet with Lieutenant Governor Polito as the, the chair of it, and sending out a survey and opening up communications and, you know, really reaching out to the municipalities, I think is something that has not been done on that level, or at least attempted to be.
Right.
So we put it that way, we'll carve it in stone, yeah.
Just a tech, technical question, we give into the stabilization fund to come up with that, is that done by, who proves it to the town?
Town meeting, yes.
So anytime we do that, we go to town?
Exactly.
We put a one article in?
Correct.
Should've been done somewhere.
Yeah, hopefully, the snow will be over.
We should.
Do we have any other questions on the financials for current year, current fiscal year?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you again for that cover letter, it's really very helpful.
Oh, yes.
I wasn't...
Glad you mentioned it.
We swapped, because when I did last time, she did this time.
I couldn't compete with Chris, I... I was very boring and dull, I, I use the other machine.
We just want the information, that's right.
Thank you, I know it's a little extra thing for you to do, and I appreciate the fact that you do it.
Yeah.
I'm minded at all.
It was helpful, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I could just catch up, so did, did we go through any of the correspondence in our packet during selectment comment period?
Um...
No.
No.
Okay, so I'll, I'll hold off on that, and we're gonna back now, we, we've approved the one day liquor license personally, please.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then you're back to event applications.
Now we're back to event applications, is there anyone here from the MS walk? If you could come on up and introduce yourself, and kind of walk us through this?
Sure, I'm Drew Davis from the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and I'm just here for our annual Cohasset Walk, which is gonna be in April of this year, and it's going to be the same as last year.
May, we have May second.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, May, sorry. Get to forty-sixth walk, so I guess it's a few...
And a two and a half hour commute here, I get it.
Yeah, exactly, you shared that with me, so that was... It's the same as last year, I believe, it's gonna start and finish at the South Shore, South Shore Community Center, and I believe a colleague of mine has sent in the route maps and the Q sheets and the applications. She couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in for her.
Is that Emily?
Yes.
And this is strictly just a walk-through Cohasset, where... And this is, is strictly just a walk-through Cohasset, where one of forty-six or so sites that this takes place in, is it on the same day?
Yes.
Or do they, are they in different, different days, different times?
We spread them up. Yep, yep. We run up to seven in one day, but, uh, we've spread it over April, May, uh, and into September.
And so the, um, it says there's, there's not an entry fee for the participants.
Correct.
Okay, so they do individual fundraising?
Right, and we encourage them to, um, can't make them.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is the date of the annual town meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Is, is, would it be possible for it to be on another day?
Uh, it would not.
How many participants do you usually have in this from Cohasset, do you know?
From Cohasset itself, I don't. The whole walk is probably about two hundred people.
We've got five hundred listed.
Oh, okay, all right, let's change a little bit then from, from years past.
I don't have any idea how many people from Cohasset.
I do not. I, I don't have that with me. Um, I could probably find out or at least give you a rough estimate. Um, I would guess probably half.
Two hundred and fifty?
Yeah. Um, I see you've made no arrangements for parking. Anyplace you could find, at least after written on the.
Okay, uh, I'll check into that. Usually we.
Yeah, that's an awful lot of people. We will, we really want people to get to town meeting at the start of ten, so.
Okay, uh, I know we've done it at the community center in the past, um, and I was not aware that there are any problems with parking or anything like that, but I can look into that for sure.
Well, it's a, it's a relatively large event, with five hundred participants, even thinking two to a car, there's two hundred and fifty vehicles in our small village. And there have been, um, comments in the past that there, you know, people from within town cannot get to the post office or
Oh, okay.
to the different stores and everything. Um, the, the, the board had been considering new regulations, which we have not just fully discussed or put into, um, enacted yet, but, uh, one of the things was that for an event of this size, that to require them to have parking, maybe either, um, for the date, I don't know whether it would work with the, um, music circus or, uh.
Oh, right, right, right.
And have a shuttle bus or something.
Sure, I can certainly look into that. Uh, we, we do use the music circus, the circus for our, um, our bike ride, so I'm familiar with that property.
It's a, uh, it just, it, it's a much more suitable parking venue for a larger walk.
Right. Do you, um, I don't know offhand how far that is from the music center. Is it rea?
It's, it's, it's a.
Okay.
Not even.
Okay.
I don't think.
Under a mile between the music circus and the, and the, uh, community center.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, a lot of events do have the, the satellite parking, and I, I think that, in, you know, if we are to approve this, we would, we would require a contingent upon finding or, you know, designating some alternative parking, cause that is something that we're really concerned about.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
The music circus is probably, I would say, less than a half a mile from the community center. It's a very, very simple walk.
Yeah, we could run, we could, I'm sure we could run shuttle buses for that.
And there are two rest stops indicated on the, are there, um, porta potties at both?
Uh, there will be, yes. Yep, we can have those dropped off and picked up the same day.
Okay, and so have, we don't have anything from, excuse me, either the Sandy Beach Association or the, um, the, um, the property on the corner of, um, North Vane and Forest to, have they been contacted?
I believe my, uh, colleague has contacted them and is probably just waiting to hear back from them.
Yeah, we, we would need to have that also, the money, if that's okay with them.
One of the things, you know, there's a lot of events that take place over each year, and a lot of them have a history in town, and, and there are things that we're, you know, we're very anxious to, to keep, within our calendar of events, if you will, but at the same time, there's a lot of kind of imposition on traffic and businesses and things like that, so,
Sure.
Um, as Karen mentioned, we are kind of revising this, um, application. We're kind of pulling it out and making some additional steps. So another thing we would, we would probably, um, add as a contingent, if we were to approve this, would be just, you know, that this would, that all of our questions would be answered, that we would have
Of course.
in writing, some of the missing ingredients, including a parking plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and just confirmation from any private property, including Sandy Beach Association, that, you know, they had, um, agreed to let you put
Absolutely.
two porta potties and a bunch of tables or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Tracy, do you know if Jen, um, indicated that, that we might, they might need an entertainment license?
I don't know. She's been dealing with Emily with this.
I'm so I'm not sure.
Yeah, you're saying you're having a band and.
A DJ.
We'll have a DJ at the community center.
Probably needed to have an entertainment license there too, and the health, the board of health already noted that we need, uh, food permits.
Yeah. How, how late do you plan? Do you think this will go out?
Well, this will be wrapped up by one o'clock.
You, um, your rest stops along the way are dispensing food and snacks?
Uh, snacks only, so they're, um, prepackaged granola bars and bottled water.
Water, okay, so I have a request for you.
Sure.
I would imagine you'll, you have a trash collection there.
We do.
Put out a second one for plastics?
We try to, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we do the collection at, uh, at the, at the, um, RTF, the local transfer center, and, uh, they just appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, and we do the same thing. We haul it back and then I recycle it, actually.
Well, it's no, I'll take it from you and drop it off.
Okay, great. The trick is, is, you know, is getting people not to put things in the recycling, which is not recyclable.
I know, I, 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 we recognize that, and just, we, we appreciate, uh, yeah, any support you can give.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do, do you know, Drew, if this is the same weekend that you typically have it on, the first weekend in May?
I believe it is. I don't know for sure, but I believe it is.
Yeah, the only, the only reason I ask is cause the, the other thing going on that particular day is the Little League parade, but I, I, I'm pretty sure they've been on the same day, so there's just a lot of activity and.
Well, it's pretty much at the same time and it's in the same area.
The setup, what time does the walk start?
Oh, walk starts at nine.
At nine, right.
The walk is going in the opposite direction of the parade.
Right, the parade usually is at like seven thirty, usually.
Are they used in the same streets?
Um. The parade goes to, from here to the field, backwards, while this is going away.
The baseball.
So by the time they come around and hit the, the little, the games are already in progress, the parade's over, so.
Because the parade, I saw it last year, the parade has a few hundred people in itself, right?
Yeah.
Seems huge to me, the parade.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It is, sure.
Well, it's opening day.
I'm just, uh, you know, one thing I think we should, let's see, we should reflect on as a board, I mean, we have a big parade for the Little League
Right.
this year, which I think would definitely be good to support, plus town meeting.
Yeah.
I know.
We need to talk about that, I mean, uh.
It's gonna sound amazing, rough, yeah.
It just never seems, we, we've been trying to work towards that, to have a discussion, a policy discussion, not just an application discussion, but a policy discussion about events and conflicts and size and impact, and it just hasn't made it to the agenda, so, um.
Is the town meeting the same, uh, same day every year as one?
No.
Nobody changing it on that, and I think when we established that, we weren't thinking of this, cause this is something I'm sure, I know, I'd like to, I want us, we all want to support.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
I just, we should think about that, and we, we're gonna have quite a, a considerable.
Lot going on that day.
Activities, plus the, the town meeting.
Yep.
The last few days, the years, it has been, first week, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, in May, it has been.
The, the walk.
Yep.
No, I mean, a town meeting. I didn't bring my event folder. Tracy, do you happen to have that calendar handy that shows what the events were last year, or?
No, don't go, no, no.
That's okay, it's all right. So, um. Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
I, I just am very concerned about being on the same day as the, I mean, we already have all the, we have the for the Little League parade, we have the sporting events, which we were unable to address in a timely fashion, to, to not have those on the same day as town meeting. I mean, it's, it's a great event and everybody wants to support it.
I think we have to, I personally would like, with all these other ones, I'd like to think about it. And see what we could do to, uh, mitigate some of the.
You know, I think in terms of a scheduling, yeah, I, when I talked to Jen about this before, you know, she said that it, she didn't think, I mean, you know, and Jen, I'm not trying to put this on her, but she said a lot of the, a lot of the participants are not Cohasset residents, and therefore it wouldn't be, because I would hate for a town meeting, and, and believe me, I want as many people to participate in town meeting, but at the same time, there are long-term events that have been going on in Cohasset, the Little League parade and this, that, you know, I hate to send them packing, to be honest with you, when, you know, we're, we've bounced around the proper town meeting date. And unfortunately, Saturdays, if we can get it to the point where we can have town meeting in March, it would be ideal, because it's anything after April vacation is just, the weekends are just consumed. It's gonna be very difficult.
The problem with having it in, we're getting off on another topic, but the, the, the problem with having it in March is we just don't have reliable figures from the state.
Yeah.
No, it's true. So, you know, so that's not gonna work. I, I think that we have to, we have to have a policy decision to decide what is more important to this, this board and to the town that we represent. When, when we spoke about the athletic events, um, you know, that, that is something that I had advocated, um, for, for a while, but it was unreasonable in my mind to, we had not acted upon it in a timely fashion, so it was unreasonable to ask all the different, um, athletic entities to reschedule for that day. I, I'm very torn on this, but, um, until we have that, that decision.
Ultimately, you can't, you can't legislate, uh, humanity. You certainly can't legislate conscience, and as much as I'd like to see everybody of voting aid show up at the, at town meeting as well, I hate to say it, but we can't stop life from going on, and, uh, and the MS walk is, it's not their burden to bear, but rather ours. If, I, 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 I do understand that there are some things that you all would like to see from this application, a parking plan being one of them, I think you scribbled some other notes, uh, there.
Obviously, they need a food permit and entertainment permit and a permission from private property owners, if there's any, anything being staged on private property.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from that perspective, there are some, uh, some open items remaining, right? Do you, would you entertain a motion, a con, for a contingent approval, or would you rather see these things completed before you looked at it?
I would entertain a contingent appro, a contingent approval.
A motion for contingent.
A motion for, for, uh, approval of the event as not ideal as the date is, given everything else going on. Um, contingent upon a parking plan, with permission for s, any staging on private property and entertainment license and a food permit.
What about park, and parking?
Yeah, I said that, yeah.
Yeah, was, that was brought up. One of, uh, one thing I, I'd just ask you for the future, um, as you can tell, we're going back and forth, and it's, it's, uh, an objective of this board to encourage civic participation, uh, rather than find ways to discourage and, or find diversion, if you will. May I ask that for next year's walk, uh, that you consider proposing this date, uh, to the board for the Cohasset Walk, prior to the end of the calendar year?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I, I think, um, I was just thinking about that as well, I mean, we try and do our, our permitting as early as possible, and I think, original letters went out in October of last year. Having said that, you know, um, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and, and moving forward, we definitely check with, who would be the best person to check with to find out?
This office, yeah.
When, when your annual meeting is, we could certainly avoid that.
We set that.
And, and the only reason I, I say that it would be hard for us to change the date for this year, um, at this point, is just because we've already had some mailers go out and, and we're kind of arranging their schedules around that, and I, I don't mean to be difficult either.
Yeah, and one of the things that is incumbent upon us and, and part of the process, the, the new process that we're gonna codify real soon is, is a six-month, you know, at least a six-month deadline for a notice of intent. We intend to come before the board to ask for the following date. And then it'll kickstart a whole bunch of, um, other pieces to this application, very similar to this, but just so that when we come to do the final approval, all of these Ts have been crossed and.
Right, I actually understand that.
Let me see, can I see a note for a second? So I, um, uh, I move that we, uh, approve the requested permit application for, uh, the MS walk contingent upon uh, the issuance of a food permit, uh, the issuance and approval of a parking plan, uh, the issuance of an entertainment license, and, um, how do I read this?
And a parking plan?
No.
At that, we didn't have private property releases?
Private property.
Oh, the rest stop.
Just.
Uh, right, and, 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 um, um, written attestation that private property owners are in agreement with any use of their abutting property for this, uh, for this event.
And that's pretty much Sandy Beach and wherever the other porta potty is, Robin's Garage.
Robin's.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Martha?
I'm, I'll abstain because I'd like to, uh, see it comes in for the final vote. I'm not against it, but I wanna make sure Holly does.
Okay.
All right, great, great.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you very much. We'll get started on that tomorrow. We'll miss you very shortly.
All right.
Thank you.
Tracy, get on that, so we can make sure Jen follows up.
Yeah, I do have it, yeah. And I do, you have a copy of it, so I did come in in October.
I, it's, I don't know that we have a, have, have had a copy of it, but I know that the conversation's been going on, yeah. Okay. Okay, the next item is the, um, the Warriskey wedding on Friday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen. Is anybody here to talk about that? Tracy, did we anticipate somebody coming? Did they realize it was at seven-ten?
Uh, Jen talked to Mrs.
Christine?
Yes, thank you.
So, um. Wonder if somebody were here, um.
Could we put it on next week's, if we wanna see somebody here, please?
I think, yeah. I, I mean, I know.
Can I just hold it until later in the meeting?
Well, it's not until June, so.
Yeah, I would, I would like to postpone this. We can put it on next week's agenda, um, because there, obviously, this is something that we're gonna have a lot of questions on, and I, I would like them to have the opportunity to present and discuss it with us. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes, I, I did have a question. They're, they're talking about, you know, the, what, about there being a live band and so, and I know that's been an issue before. Have they, I just would, I would wanna make sure that the neighbors, it's just a small street there, that they've been given some kind of sort of notice, you know, of what's going on, so they can have an opportunity to give us any reaction to. Is that being done?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I know Jen's been in contact with the family, and I, 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 I did tell her, tell Jen, when I, before I put this on the agenda, that I imagined that was gonna be one of the first questions we'd all ask.
Oh, okay.
How do the neighbors feel, so she's been in touch with the, um.
If we. Or if we could just make sure that Jen, whoever it is, that somebody who sends out a notice to these neighbors that this, so that when we hear it, they have a chance to, to say something to us.
I think with a band, having gone through the seventies here, with bands, um, I think they'd have to send notes all up in the whole region, the area.
There's two, there's two pieces to this. One is that we wanna make sure that the neighbors know that we're having the conversation to discuss, potentially approving it.
And they can give us.
And they can.
And then, at that point, they, so that they know to be here or not, to participate in the conversation, and then, depending on what our decisions are, then there would be obviously some requirements to notify the others.
So I, I, I have a, I have a question. This is an event, happens to be a wedding reception or whatever, on private property. The, all right, they have requested use of town property for parking, and they have requested, um, road closures. Other than that, I mean, do, does the board have jurisdiction over telling people what entertainment they can have on their property or not?
Well, it, it, it's a very good question, Karen, but it does, it does bring up, um, related issues that we have with a, a business in town.
Well, it, it does. Um, and I think.
Well, as, as, as a request, I think that's something that, that needs to be clarified for us as well.
Right.
Uh, you're right, it's a private, it's a private, uh, a private event on private property, not for profit, so there are some distinctions. But nonetheless, if the question is disturbance or the potential disturbance of neighbors, we've gotta figure out the. we've gotta figure out the, the correct process to make sure that neighbors are alerted, you know?
Right, e- exactly, but my, my question is, it's not a commercial property.
Right.
It is, doesn't have a permit from the town. It's private property, it's individuals.
Right.
I wanna make sure where this board's jurisdiction lies in this regard.
Well, it really depends on whether or not you and I get an invitation.
Well, my understanding is, I think it'll be federalist, but my understanding is that we really don't have jurisdiction.
I don't want it.
We don't have a, a noise cutoff, and I think they asked just for us to kind of bless that, whether we decide to do it or not.
That's right.
They wanted us to sort of nod them over.
I'm very, yeah.
And we can, yeah.
They're using the public.
I mean, people do this stuff all the time in their backyard.
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna get into, I don't, I personally, my opinion is, I do not wanna get into the business of approving what people can and cannot do on their private property.
I see, okay.
I agree, yeah.
Now, if, if, the, the issues that affect the public property, using the library for parking or the closure of roads, that I'm fine with.
Correct. Yep.
Um, so, um, if we can clarify that.
No, and I, I think that's exactly right. I agree, um, that, so Tracy, I, I think the message from this conversation is that we're gonna postpone a substantive discussion on this application, um, till next week.
Okay.
We will most likely only consider the issue of the parking in the, um, library.
Right, and the.
And just as a follow-up, and I'll communicate this to Jen as well, that, you know, I wanna make sure the library trustees know that kinda thing. So it's not just us saying, sure, go ahead and park.
Right, so she, she just sent me a message saying that she, she thought it was next week it was gonna be an agenda, because she is working with the woman on the parking plan.
Okay.
She did talk to the library trustees. They okayed the parking there.
Okay. Okay.
But she's also asking the music circus as a backup plan.
Okay, for the parking.
For the parking, but she's presenting a plan to Jen, and she had something going on tonight, so it was supposed to be next week, so, yeah.
For the parking. So she. Okay, so she's expect- she's expecting a conversation next week, we'll discuss parking and road closing.
Mm-hmm. Right, okay.
Most likely will not discuss the sound.
Right.
Will follow up and make sure that there's no reason for us to do that.
Right, I mean, I, I. Another level that I'm uncomfortable with that is, I don't, I don't wanna approve somebody having a DJ or a band on their private property, and then the, a butter's being upset about it, and, and it coming back on us.
Sure. Yep.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
I agree.
Would there be any reason for something like this, where you have amplified sound, where we might need to issue an entertainment plan? That's a, the, the board has police powers, so it's really a policy question, so.
Excellent. So we haven't looked at the entertainment license, have we?
Well, I'm asking the question because, uh, ultimately, um, where the danger lies in this is, you know, amplified music could cause some sort of.
Oh, a- absolutely, but this is why I'm asking for clarification.
Right, no, no, I, I got it.
So that, I mean, you know, these are the, the things that it's, it's nice that we're having a chance to do it tonight, so that when it is come before us, we do have the information necessary, you know, those are the things I, I like to have lined up before we talk about something. Um, I, I don't understand entirely the implication of the board having police powers.
The, the board, no, 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 when I say that, that you regulate, the board regulates based on its police, its police powers.
He says the regulation.
You can just see all the words and what it's intended by.
But I need that further explained to me.
Well, again, I, this, this, this was adopted by the selectmen in July of two thousand thirteen with these caveats. And I wasn't here when you did it, um.
Hmm, but thi- but this is a private, this is, did the.
Yeah, but it explicitly, I mean, the, the language this board explicitly adopted reads, as well as activities without our amplified sound. It, it, it says that in the second paragraph, uh, fourth line. I mean, it's, it's very explicitly written into this, so, again, it, you, you're, you're well within your rights to read that question.
Let's follow up.
I, I just wanna make sure, I mean, the, the board can have adopted it. I just wanna make sure that it's legal. Yeah.
No, no, the, the, sound is a, is a challenging thing.
We have no noise bylaws. It's just one law bylaw that says that something about, I think it's one of the last bylaws, says something about if it's a problem to them, that they would.
Remember, it also says, it says amplified sound. Amplified sound means you're using loudspeakers or something. If somebody's just playing instruments, I don't know if that would, again, I'm not sending yours to town council. I don't know if that would qualify or not, so, uh, we're gonna have, you're gonna have town council coming in in two weeks anyway.
One week.
Right, well, no, not, two weeks, yes.
Well, two weeks, town council, right, but we need to, we need this discussion next week.
They have to run through it.
So, what, um, why don't you and I communicate and then communicate with Dorance, just to see
Sure, we'll bounce it off, sure, happy to do that.
where and what, because to Karen's point, once we allow or disallow this, then we open up ourselves to having to then approve and disapprove every single thing in town, including, you know, the block party.
Approve everything in town, yeah.
Um, you know, and it's very different for commercial v- ventures that have special permits that allow certain things or not.
Right. I, I do think that what, what triggered this in front of you is not that they're having a band.
Right.
It's that they wanna close the road. That's why, that's why it's in front of, right.
Exactly, that's the main thing. They, I think they wanted the blessing of us, but.
Yeah, that's why they closed the road, yeah.
So if they don't close the road, then they, this would never come in front of you at all.
That's right.
Right, correct.
So, um.
Right.
Hmm.
Right, okay. All right, so we'll work.
Well, I do know, uh, 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 a little history that, uh, in the past, if, uh, they wanted, the family wanted a party, and it'd be music and so forth, they get, they get a call from the police and so forth, and if it out of hand at ten o'clock, it'd be shut down. But this is a totally different situation here, uh, and, um, I, I agree on the road question.
All right, we'll talk before the meeting, hopefully we'll get something on next week's.
Okay, so, let's, um, why don't we move on to the FY sixteen budget update?
So, um, so, um, the primary projection was distributed to all of you, I think, only a couple of weeks ago, uh, in, in the packet. So, um, that is the, the, this fits within, within this number of operating guidelines, this is what we're trying to work towards. Uh, no, this is what we're working towards. This is the mandatory maximum budget.
Did we have that, did we have that in the package?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, this, this was in the packet two weeks ago.
I know, I saw it, and I must have put it in the, I probably have it in the fifteen.
Um, no, I'm not sure what's. So.
I, I have it in my other bag. Everything's in my other bag.
Thank you. This is just, these are our bud- the budget message we did in the fall, but, um.
I have it, I brought it.
Good.
I don't have that, you don't have another copy of that?
Do you need a spare?
No, no, the numbers.
Oh, no, I can make copies of it. I'm happy to do that.
If we can discuss it in length, we just don't have it.
We need the numbers. I, I didn't bring it either, so I didn't need it.
Give me just a second. Right back.
I brought my FY sixteen folder, but.
Uh, six, seven, eight, um.
Oh, here.
The, the, there's always moving pieces as you begin to assess and review, uh, planning for a, um, budget. The, um, there's a, and, and, and there's a lot of, a lot of pieces that are still in motion. But the, the fundamental piece of an operating budget is to operate the town's services, services and programs. So, let me give you some, some highlights of things that are, that I'll, I'll be presenting to you with full, I, I, so I'm gonna get to you last week, between start prep, storm remediation, and everything else, it's been, um, it's been a little bit more of a, thank you. You have, you have copies, you're good.
A three-ring circus.
All right, but, well, but, yeah, so three snow-ringed circus, so, um, so, um, I, I, we're probably gonna have to do this because of next week's free, um, uh, because of the way next week's gonna stack, to, to have a more in-depth conversation, the first week of March, I guess, um.
You're, you're really getting out there.
No, 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 so, but we can, so I'm gonna start talking with you tonight philosophically, okay? So, um, th- there are, in order to provide
Thank you, Mary.
services, our sing- we, we need, we need resources. Uh, our, our single, most valuable, non-monetary resource is our staff. Um, during the budget process last year, it became very obvious that one of the areas w- which we were lacking was our facility staff. So, as I, um, I, I met with Mark and Brian and talked at length, and, um, I'm proposing an additional staff member in facilities. Uh, basically a number two to Mark Kelly. Uh, I've gone ahead and I've gotten funding for that from the advisory committee to cover this year, to cover, um, I, I plan to present that in the budget anyway for next year, but because of our staff situation now, we need to fill in an, an open sp- a, a position that's been temporarily vacated because of, um, a medical situation. So, um, what we've been able to do is bring our veterans agent on to fill that, um, and.
The facilities position?
The facilities position, so he happened to have a long experience on, uh, doing, um, work with mechanical, the things that, that, from his past, that'll, and, and, and are, are in reserve for a long time, do a lot of logistics, having to have the right set of skills and the right, uh, ability, and also fit nicely into the budget, uh, and doesn't present the O-Cup liability right now either, which is even a bit, more of a, more of a benefit. Um, and it'll also allow, um, him to, to, to be onsite as a, as a, as a veterans, to do veterans work and work with Mark. So it's basically a three-quarter times, a thirty-hour-a-week position with Mark, not full-time, and then the rest being veterans work. Um, so i- i- it became, it's, it's, so that's happened, so he began yesterday, actually, so.
So that extra thirty hours from now until the end of the fiscal year has been funded through advisory?
Yes.
And then this is the nu- that's the, from the new thirty-hour position in FY sixteen budget?
And what I really should, right, and what I should really start with, so.
When did that happen?
What's her?
I'm sorry, when did, when did advisory take that vote?
Three, four weeks ago.
So, um.
The twenty-second of January, actually.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the, it, it was, it, it was, it, that was an emergency. It was a need-to-backdevelop position on an interim basis. I had not planned to do that, but when we had a staff situation, we had, we had, um, we had to do something, because Mark, Mark literally knew the bodies. So, what, what happened last year, was happened in this, in this current fiscal year, is, is we had five retirements, uh, unexpected, five retirements. Um, and that has allowed, not only do we have some salary savings because of the, the gap between the retirement and the replacement, uh, but we've had long-term savings because the salaries of the replacements are less. So, um, I'm, I'm going, I'm utilizing those savings to help fund as much of this as possible. So there's a couple of places this is gonna happen. This is one. Um, again, I think facilities needed the, the resource anyway, so, um, uh, there was, there were retirements in, um, let me, let me go through this here, conservation, public works, assessor, um, fire, and police. So, at, at various times during the year.
But they'll all have to be replaced?
Correct, but they're all being replaced with people on a, a lower on this, on the salary scale.
I, I understand that, just.
So without, uh, so th- those savings accumu- th- those savings are, are gonna help, um, fund this, this, uh, these, this very limited expansion of staff that I'm, that I'm gonna be asking.
Where, where does that show up on the numbers?
It, it doesn't show it, this is, this is just, so, so we have, everything has to fit into this number, ten million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. It's the second from the bottom of the gray column.
Okay, so that's not in, that's not, not in these numbers yet. There'll be in more.
Well, no, it, 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 it has to fit into that, it has to fit in.
Okay, so you're talking about the way you've.
Yeah, I, 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 I have to, what, yes.
This reduction and these other seasons and so on, so, um.
Correct, correct. So, so, in, in order to, with, with, with a maximum revenue, okay, uh, with a maximum revenue increase and, and, and limits on that, you have to find savings. If I, if I wanna do any kind of expansion, I have to find savings. It's the only way to fund it. So, you, you can fund things, you don't necessarily have to spend more, you just kind of spend differently. So what I'm recommending is I'm spending differently. Uh, we've had some savings, like I said, we have savings in five departments, um, just on salaries, and we're gonna, I'm, I'm utilizing them a couple of ways. And one, one of them is, is again, an additional position in facilities, which I think was necessary.
Yeah, now, what would this person in facilities, just roughly, what would they be doing?
Be, be the number two person to the director, and be a, a crew chief to be able to go out there. The, the facilities department oversees eleven facilities, eleven buildings, schools in town design. Um, and, um, in need, so, so right now we have one person, our director, who's, who spent most of, is the primary point person on, uh, technical issues. And again, we, we provide most of our specialty services through contractors, electrical, plumbing, HVAC. There's usually more than one thing going, happening at a time, uh, so to have another person there effectively doubles the amount of management that can go on. It'll also allow Mark to every once in a while take a vacation, which is not such a terrible thing, um, and not have to worry that there's no one else to plug the gap. And, um, it, it also, again, so it fits budgetarily, but it also, it, it fits a need clearly, as it was identified by the advisory committee last year, by the way. It was, it was, it was absolutely underscored that facilities was, had, was under-resourced from a, from a, from a personnel. It's one of those areas where it's clear, so that was one of those areas. Um, I, I'm, we're, we're, I'm also, um, recommending that, that we're, we tweak some, some things, and here's one example. Um, we've paid for a conservation agent as a contractor for a long time, uh, but we have very few hours onsite. Uh, it, it doesn't seem to be working very effectively. It's not about the individual who's holding that position, it's about how it's structured. In fact, we don't have a contract, we have a, a clean contract for the service for, for about seventeen or eighteen years. So, so, um, I've had some conversations with the chairman, and I've talked to some other, um, uh, folks internally, and I think the best answer is to bring, uh, the person on as a part-time employee, as opposed to a pure contractor. That would give us more, eh, eh, more hours onsite to, uh, and to have more, eh, eh, for our, our residents to have more access to somebody without spending more money. And again, it, it also, it's not, it wouldn't be a benefit position, it would be just shy of a benefit position.
Next question, yeah.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm watching, I understand.
So, uh, on that position, who would make that hire, on that position?
I would post something in, and, again, when, when something like that happens, like I usually work with the committee to help them, and they, they are involved in vetting the finalists, um.
But who makes the decision? My understanding on the statute.
All employees are appointed by the town manager, um, short of the ones that dislike would have, uh, approval over. So, this would be something that I would, again, for example, the health agent, that, that, that being posted. I run the process in consultation with the Board of Health, I get their input, um, and then I'll appoint, I'll, I'll appoint in collaboration with the Board of Health. The person on a day they base a point, request a town manager.
You'd appoint and report to you, but, but my understanding, and I don't have it in front of me, it was in the statute for the Conservation Commission, that, that they, they're the ones that have the authority to, uh, uh, to hire the needed, uh.
To hire professional resources as they need.
Professionals and again, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I can't spit, I can't spit the exact quote out.
But this is.
Including agents too and so forth.
Right, and so, so again, this is a collaborative hire, uh, uh, because remember, on a day-to-day basis, the Conservation Commission doesn't manage anybody, the, the town manager does. No, again, it's, I'm not, I, I, I most certainly am gonna work with them on this, but, um, that's my recommendation. Again, if people say no, if they say absolutely not, we wanna keep the same pattern, if all of you say no, then we'll.
No, I mean, sounds, sounds good, yeah, I'm just making sure that according to the, according to the statute, if it's, they've empowered the commission to do this, to hire agents and people, then I just want us to be sensitive to that.
No, no, absolutely, and the Town Manager Act, though, uh, you know, gives the power in this town to the town manager, so.
Right.
Um, that's, that said, again, I, you have to work, just like I've been working with the Board of Health with a job description, I'm gonna do the same thing with the Conservation Commission, um, because, again, I, I think we've, we've, after having assessed the needs internally, there, there just isn't enough resource available, um, and, and again, it's, it doesn't have to cost any more. In fact, I don't think it will cost any more. In fact, it may actually, in the end, cost us less, um, but, um, you know, we, we do need to just address, address it. There are some times when hiring a contractor actually costs you more, and you don't, and you get less service, um, so that, that was, that was an example. I will have, uh, Brian Joyce in front of, of us, and we'll talk a little bit more elaborately about what I would like to do with Public Works, but I will tell you that, um, I would, I, I think it's time that we move into a little bit more of a collaborative internal management. Not, the sewer board exists, the water board exists, but I think internally we need to manage that under a little bit more consolidated umbrella. Municipal services, public works, however you wanna describe it, um, and I think that, um, that would, that would, you know, they're, it works that way effectively anyway. Carl and, and Public Works worked with Brian, and Facilities, and Mark worked with Brian, and Brian look, is, is on, working on the RFP for Water, and he's gonna be working on Sewer, he's not doing as much with Sewer at the moment, 'cause there's not very much going on on Sewer. He's been doing a lot more with Water, but I think it's, I think having internally, on, on, on the management side, that kind of oversight, I think is better. And I think having another resource in there, um, that would be someone who would oversee on a, on a full-time basis procurement and contract management with Brian is very important. Again, I don't think NSN needs additional staff, it may just mean we, we're allocating staff from one place to another, uh, but we need that oversight, I mean, particularly as we begin to ramp up, we know that there's additional capital with sewers that'll come up eventually. We know that water, there is, you know, there's other facilities issues that we need to address. Brian's been an invaluable resource, but I, you know, he needs the, another person just overseeing this day-to-day. You know, the more in-depth public works procurement's a little more complicated, we already kind of handle, I think, nicely the thirty B procurement, the, the routine supplies, purchasing of things, I think we're doing. the routine supplies, purchasing of things, I think we're doing much better with that. But the bigger public works procurement is a little more complicated, there's more bidding requirements, there's more publication requirements, and I think having a staff member that does that a little bit more regularly is a good idea. So that, that'll be, that's gonna be, again, I'm telegraphing, I'm not, I'm literally telling you what I'm gonna be presenting to all of you.
Well, I, I think.
I'm gonna ask you to think about it, then you're gonna have a chance to ask lots of questions, all right? I'm sorry, you look like you wanna ask me questions.
No, 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 I just, I just wanted to say, you know, I think one of the things we've needed is a manager, with your capabilities, to, to take this org chart and make sense of it, within the, within the budget guidelines, you know, within the budget framework. And so, you know, I, I look forward to having this conversation fully fleshed out, because I do think there is inefficiencies in, not necessarily individuals, but just how the job description is, or, or how we're, how we execute their positions.
Oh, I'd like to be able to give you a little bit more paper to chew on, I want you to be able to take it home, chew on it, think about it, and then, and then talk.
Have you done an org chart?
Yeah, I, I've been working with Lisa on that, and she gave me the original org chart. Yeah, and there's about twenty.
It's like a debt service chart.
Well, yeah, it's like, all right, right, there's about twenty direct reports to the town manager, give or take, depending on how you wanna set it all up.
Feel a bit like a platoon leader.
Exactly.
It's only twelve.
And, and, and by the way, I have, I, I love to interact with staff, I, I've been doing that a lot, and whether, I don't care who they are, what level they are at, it's, I, I try to be approachable, and I wanna know what's going on, and that's helpful. That said, I think we have to streamline a little bit, so that routine stuff can go, you know, I don't have to see every piece of routine business. Another piece that I have talked to you about is human resources. So I've built into this, in fact, if you look at this, if I look at the, I guess it's right about in the middle of the page, it's above transfers to other funds, it's, it's what's called, I guess, it's part of the shared budget, and other, other, other amounts that are raised. There's, there's two lines, one is technology, and that's been a shared function, and then there's what's called here, HR and safety management. So in technology, we do need to expand, and this budget would fund jointly with the schools, a full-time director and a deputy, two full-time people, not just one, plus resources, additional resources. And again, that may be interns, it may be part-timers, it may be a combination of contractors, but information, technology, infrastructure is as critical as plumbing, or electricity, or the structural members that hold up a building in this day and age. And the town has come a very long way, and now we need to manage it effectively. Having one person running around doing all of it was simply not effective. And we've taken some steps towards that end by bringing on a company that does, that's doing third-party outside, twenty-four seven network monitoring and management, which I've talked to you about already. Now we need to hire those next two people. I expect that the number two person will probably spend most of their time, at least in the beginning, on the school side, because they have a lot of technological, programmatic implementation, which is, there's been a big report on digital learning, I think, I think we've seen that. And I gotta have a copy if everybody wants to borrow the book, but I think it's up on, it's not up on the website, it should be soon.
The digital learning?
Yeah, the digital learning report.
And Katie wants to come in, maybe not next week, but the week after, I think?
That'd be great.
Present to the board.
And I, I think it's exciting, and I think it's really, I think it's dynamic, and I think it really, it's been really well done. And they literally went to the state recommendations based on what other people are doing, and, and this helps partially fund that, or support that, I should say. And again, it, it's, it's not, it's not an unreasonable expense. The, the other piece, though, is, is HR and safety management.
Well, before you go off on the tech there, so you're adding two people there, or a person?
Well, no, basically it's a person.
Person.
Right now, there's a one, this, we added money last year, it, it, it didn't, it ended up, but another person never got brought on.
Yep.
Now we're going to do that.
So you, so you have two people instead of one?
For sure.
And who will they report to, and how'd that work?
The, 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 the chief would report to my, the chief technology officer would report to myself and to superintendent schools.
So you and the superintendent would be working collaboratively in terms of that individual? And then that other person?
Would report to the CTO, correct, yes. I think a large, the single largest day-to-day user bases in the school system, it just is. They have, they have, during the day, hundreds and hundreds of users, between teachers and students and all of that. So I think they need to live that side a little bit more aggressively, at least in the beginning, but we also need a little bit more robust support on the town side. And again, I don't know that we need another body necessarily for time, but I think we need the resource, and I want the CTO to tell me the best.
What you need.
Right, and these monies for these individuals, three hundred?
Correct.
Now, is that, is there a total salary coming from the town side or the school side?
Well, this is above, this is above the line, it's shared, so it's, it's from, it's from neither, it's from both, if you wanna look at it that way.
So that three hundred thousand dollar line item is actually the departmental budget, would include salaries and resources.
Correct, everything, exactly, everything, and it's a shared department, it's above the line, shared department.
It's shared between the schools and schools themselves.
Schools and, correct. The, the HR and safety management, I'm looking to split fifty-fifty, basically. I think, we've talked about Sullivan Kevin, and I've talked to him a little bit too, and, and my HR consultant has told me that we've grown, and we just need to have a resource.
Yes.
But we need to have someone who lives this on a regular basis. And I'm, and I'm, I'll flesh out something a little bit more solidly for you as to what it might look like, but we do need to have someone on board where a very fair chunk of their time is spent doing HR policy, and it just has to be. I will still be involved from, as, as the overall leader, but there's just so much.
Well, this individual would also be keeping up with the current rules, regulations, legislations, opportunities, like, yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and also.
We, we don't have anybody there in that right now, this budget disappears.
What we have is someone who does now, the paperwork and processing, and makes sure that, that forms and stuff are done, and that people are following processes. We need someone to do the policy, the job description.
Maybe a full-time worker here, in co-hastity of reporting to you.
Yes. On, on this side, and I've offered to share this resource with the schools, they desire at this point, I don't think they're ready for that.
They're hiring somebody, they want somebody to do that kind of.
Right now, the superintendent effectively fills the same role on, on the school side that I fill in the town manager's. And so, that, that other half of it will, will support, I believe the schools are looking to do a school safety, a resource, a school resource officer, which is a police officer assigned to the school system, and that would fund that. I, that's my, that's my understanding, it's how they would like to use that piece of, of that money, so it's, again, seventy thousand.
Could that be broken out, though, because to me it's not the same.
Well, it's only one line, so that's the reason it's split like that, I, I mean, I could break it into two.
Let's make it two lines, I mean.
Okay, I mean, I, I.
An HR person is an HR person, and the, the, I'm not quibbling with the, you know, with the need for it at the, at the schools, I'm just saying that it's something that. So the, so I'm just gonna make it up, so it's seventy, it's, you know, whatever the number is, whatever, if that's what it is, then just one is an HR number,
It's fifty-fifty, yes.
and the other is a resource number.
It just do.
Right, and, and if it, if it's a police officer, why wouldn't it be part of the police budget?
Uh, be, because that would mean that it would be a hundred percent funded on the town side, and, and the person is spending the vast majority of the time on the school side. That said, it's still a resource to the town, I mean, remember, the schools are part of the town, so.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm just trying to.
So having it above the line like that, I think, keeps it appropriately a shared resource, which it really is. As opposed to.
Are you saying there literally isn't, like, enough lines on the, the plan?
Well, the, the, the spreadsheet is not designed to, to do this.
To add lines, got it.
Okay, I mean, by the way, I can add a line, I can add, I can add a line, um, but.
Can't add, you can. Of course you can. It might not print out on one page, it'll go down to six-point type, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll make it fit, we'll make it fit as best as we can.
Fair enough. I mean, I, I think, for me, it's more important to be able to understand where the dollars are actually going, than to have it on one piece of paper.
Well, I, I think what, what I should do is, what I will have for you, and I have to, maybe the next time there's snow, I'll just be stuck in my office. Is, is more of a narrative explanation, too, I think that'd be very helpful. But again, the, so those are, those are things that I think are really important, that need to be, that need to be here, because we're, you know, we're, as, as, as Steve has said, and others have said, it's, it's, you know, HR's risk management, and quite frankly, a safety officer's risk management too, just on the school side. So I think it's important that we invest in those kind of resources.
Would that safety officer be in a pinch if you need suddenly an emergency, need all the police?
Oh, yeah, they're a full-time police officer, yeah, so they could, they could be available on nights and weekends, and in the summers, and, and yes.
So I'm concerned about the funding, that it could be partially, could be under the police.
Well, I mean, the person still reports to the police chief, I mean, you know, they're still police officers.
Well, that's what I mean, it's a do, it's, it's kinda doable.
But their full-time school job is in the schools, and then any other, any other stuff would come out, if they're assigned, like, during the summer,
Correct.
or do overtime, that comes out of the police budget.
Correct.
That seems.
Well, again, I, remember, I'm just laying this out for you to, to start chewing, you're gonna lay, you're gonna, I have no doubt you'll be asking me lots and lots and lots of additional questions. The, the, again, and some of these things, this is the first round of, of, of suggestions, and those are, and those are new, but fundable, and I think critically important, and again, I don't think that, I'm not expecting that every hire we make is gonna be here for thirty years. I think it's, you know, it's nice, I, I, I think some people will, but I think, I don't think most will. I think in some of these positions, at least for HR, maybe an early or mid-career professional, who's either starting or beginning, or, or earlier in their career that we can get for value, and who might wanna go on to something bigger or broader at some point, and, and, you know, there's only one, I think we need to have a mix of staff. I mean, I, by the way, I, I think it's incredible, we've, we've had some wonderful people here who've spent a lot, their entire careers. It's an incredibly dedicated, and, and quite frankly, very valuable asset, but it's not, it's not as common in this day and age. And I think we have to have a mix of early, mid, and later career professionals to make a, make this team go.
Make that ecosystem work, yeah.
Exactly, and I think that there's, I think the way the, the state system is set up is a little more ability to move around anyway. So you, your pension moves with you, and to some extent, your, your, your ability to vest medical moves with you to some extent, so. But, you know, I, I wouldn't, again, I believe, I think we're working to move, to fix a lot of the OPEB. We're gonna have made some incredible strides, I think, by the end of this fiscal year on addressing OPEB long term. So I'm, I'm most certainly cognizant of that, but I also think that there's things we have to do to, to, to make the cattle operate to the level that all of you are expecting, the residents are expecting.
Two, two quick questions.
Yeah.
One is, in terms of HR right now, where are we in the job description, annual performance review?
I am planning on having a HR presentation in front of the board in March, so we can have this, we can have a conversation.
Update us.
So we just have to schedule it into the calendar. I, I was hoping to do it earlier this month, and between the weather, that just wasn't, wasn't possible, because I think it's the best way to do it.
And then, do you think next Tuesday, the twenty fourth, we could have some more insight on this ten point eight million dollar piece?
Yes, I, I, I would like to give you, I would like to give you before next week, but I hope, but I hope to give you today,
Okay.
which is a little bit more detailed, that would, a, a real, the real line-by-line item proposed.
So if we queue up that conversation next week, obviously we'll need it for the packets this week.
Yeah, but what, yeah, so whether or not we have a full-blown conversation or not, but it was not in one day, I expect we'll be talking about this over a little bit of time. And then that'll allow the advisor committee to start queuing up their conversations as well.
Yeah, I, I'm getting very concerned about the timeframe involved here, and wondering if the board should consider having a separate meeting. I know everybody's got very busy schedules, that we can devote just to this, when you have it, when you have the information sooner rather than later, though.
Mm-hmm.
Because we sh- we should be, we should be starting to discuss this, the advisory needs to discuss it, capital?
That's ongoing right now. They're, 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 they're meeting every Thursday, pretty much, so. The capital, but the capital.
Budget.
Budget committee, group committee is, is meeting them pretty much every Thursday. They met last Thursday, they had a very long conversation about school. The week before, we talked about public safety. So typically those come to you after they've gone through capital and contracts.
I would, I, I.
They would be, they, they're pretty, they're pretty much meeting every Thursday between now and the end of March, I believe.
They have a certain amount of figure to work with, is it, do they have it in the part now, so to speak?
Yeah, basically.
Do you allocate that when you recommend your budget?
Basically, it's about a million dollars.
Well, that's new funds.
Yeah, new funds.
There's a carryover balance, but there's also a continuing commitment.
Correct.
So you're, you're thinking a million new, not new, no?
Yes, a million new, a million forty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Would you add?
There's, there's a million, there's a million for, projected for this fiscal year to add to the existing fund, assuming that the town votes it.
Right.
The existing fund balance, though, and the new dollars, also have to meet ongoing debt commitments that the fund of the town has made for payment through the fund, so it's not like there's a million dollars there.
All right, yeah, because there's commitments, so how much do we have in there now, do you know roughly?
Let, let's, let's have that conversation, uh, down in the day.
So, let me.
If it's a specific number, and yes, it can be.
So could I ask the board how, how you would feel about a FY sixteen budget deep dive meeting with just that on the agenda, on a non-Tuesday night? I know, sorry, but, right now, for, for March, we're scheduled for the third, the tenth, and the twenty-fourth.
Can we do this on the third?
The seventeenth? It depends on, uh, we're both.
I mean, we can't.
Yeah, we can do it on the third.
Yeah, it's important.
I mean, I thi- I think at this point, it's gotta, it's two weeks away, but it's gotta take priority over anything else, really.
Yeah, that's two weeks away.
I mean, this is, this is gonna happen, we're gonna be right back in the same pattern that we're always in, of doing the budget at the last minute, and there's no need.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering whether we could even do it, you know, start a conversation next Tuesday, and then have another meeting on like the twenty-sixth. But if, if, if we can, you tell us, assuming there's no more, you know what?
Well.
Yeah.
Um, we could do, I, I don't have my calendar in front of me, um, the twenty-sixth is fine, I mean, uh, if, if you can do that. I just don't know what the availability of space is right now, because we're gonna have to talk about the fact that we just lost space, um, and I'll get to that in a few minutes.
Space, who are you talking to?
Okay, so, forget, forget meeting space for two seconds, would, would the board prefer to start the conversation next week?
Meeting space, meeting space.
We do have other agenda items, including the hearing.
I.
Get the twenty-fourth, you're talking about?
You're not here.
I mean, I'm here by phone.
Here by phone, you're participating remotely, and, um, should we either do the third, or we add an extra meeting next week on the twenty-sixth? Are you back? You wanna go the third, okay, all right, we'll just leave it to the third.
No. No, I'm not back. So we'll start on the twenty-fourth, no, we'll start on the twenty, start next week.
But no later than the third.
Yep.
I, what I can do is I can give you a presentation next week, then you can then continue the conversation the next week with more information, with, with questions, and then we can go. You can zero in then on whatever you'd like to talk about, is that fair, like a two-part conversation?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So all, all I would like to say, though, is that, you know, one of, one of my concerns in my previous term, and, and has continued on, it's been that for too long, the town has, has balanced the budget by cutting back services and hours of personnel. And I'm not in favor of adding personnel for the sake of adding personnel, but I think that we need to be realistic about what it takes in order to provide the level of services that the citizens of this town want. But we need to make sure that they really want them, and are willing to pay for them.
Well, I, I can honestly tell you that we're in a, we, we, I think it's time that we start to have, I honestly agree, I couldn't agree with you more.
Well, I think we're paying the price for it.
I couldn't agree with you more, I, I, and again, absent this winter, I think there's, which is hopefully a very anomalous one, we can only hope. I think facilities is, was ground zero when I literally, during my interview process, it was clearly an issue.
And HR.
And I, and I talked with Mark, I said, you gotta give me a little time, we gotta assess and understand, and I think it's clear, I, I don't think the town needs to staff up a, a facilities department with twenty people, and I wouldn't suggest that at all, but I do think that there's two pieces. One is that there needs to be another higher level, a skill level, a trained level person in that department for starters. And I think we're going, and again, I'm kinda T this, we're not gonna have that conversation tonight, but we have to talk about all the people who work on facilities being under one umbrella, it's, I don't, I'm not ready to have that conversation today, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's been talked about, and I think we have to talk about it, and most other communities that I've worked with, with their managers on, on issues, do that. They consolidate their, their building maintenance staff and their facility staff, and I say building, custodian. They, they, by the way, they still play the same roles, I mean, you know, they can be at a full site, full-time onsite custodian, but to have, to have that group, which is larger than the facility staff, not report to the facilities director is problematic. I mean, they do work together, but it's, it, it, I think it would, I think it's worth that conversation, I don't know that, I'm not asking to have that conversation yet, I think we have to get the facility staff where I think we want it first.
No, I, 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 I understand the logic of, of your, your interest in, in aligning the work processes and the town's needs. And I think to Karen's point, I think this is, was Karen's point, you know, we'd best not fiddle with, with not just headcount, but bodies that don't align, align with the town's needs, I won't even go as far as wants. I see the, the technology piece personally as essential services, you laugh about it. You laugh about it, but it's like water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Um now, we never would've seen that coming thirty years ago.
Right.
How did we see it coming ten years?
Uh but it is, it is here and it's a and it's an an area where we've been lacking. And I it was a, it was a very sore spot from a risk management standpoint to have no HR function.
Okay.
Well, we're on our way. That's good. Um and in in many respects, I would argue, especially with a um a broadly uni- uh unionized workforce as well as non-unie- unionized workforce, it's absolutely necessary in today's age that we ha- we have that function. Um so from that perspective, the alignment makes some sense and yes, let's 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 dig into the, dig dig into it from, uh you know, wh- when they, when the uh when the agenda item appropriately identifies it. And I I'm not trying to delay the conversation, because I do believe it needs to be had, but it's one that I think we, you know, we need to have focused and dedicated and not looking at the clock.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
And and again, I, as part of the, without going to any more great depth tonight, I I think that alignment is important. So one of the things is that the the person we just brought on in facilities also has a higher level license, uh so they can drive more heavy equipment. So I I we need to, I I, you know, Brian Joyce and I have been talking about, you know, a a better integration of of the public works staff and the facility staff so that, you know, there can be a little bit, in in a major situation like we're dealing with now or some kind of major project, you can integrate them a little bit more cleanly where you need to. Uh not every day, I mean, you know, there's different responsibilities, but you know, there's many hands make light work, same kind of a thing, you know. It's not gonna be perfect, everyone's not gonna be able to be at the same level, but uh in my experience in the past, I had, you know, park staff who became highway workers during storms. You know, we started to clean the parks, but that was number two. First thing was getting the roads and the parking lots clear. And I'd like to, we, I I think Mark agrees that we need to move in that direction, I think Carl would like us to move in that direction. Uh and I think we need to continue that discussion and and where we can get staff up to the next level so they can handle some of this, I think we need to. Uh it just makes everybody more um versatile. I mean, we're in a small town, we all have to do different things. Uh and I think, I think there's a commitment to do that and and a and I think that's, but you know, you could, it's not just, you know, you're not just adding a body, you're in a multiple resource, a a resource that has multiple utility, to be very geeky consulting about it. Uh so, all right, is that, uh so I, that's a, that's a tee up of the conversations, okay.
Yeah, and just just as a, to close, I I mean, our um budget message that we developed in the fall is is something that we probably should all just keep in our hands going forward, because a lot of this, these discussions address these very priorities that we set into place, including infrastructure priorities, which is clearly revealing itself to be
more and more important every day.
Um but Chris, I know that you talk quite often with the school superintendent, where are they in their budget process?
Um they're, um to be honest with you, we we've talked about a lot of things. I have not talked about the specifics of the budget in the last week or so, and I will explain what we have been talking about in a few months.
So let's let's move quickly through the next couple of items. Um next is the a discussion and vote to hold a public hearing for a zoning article proposed for annual town meeting.
Yes, and actually should be zoning articles, okay, so let me explain.
Article's?
Yes, I I, so let let me explain, so um the board has had in front of it, um that there's there's, the way the process works is that while the planning board holds the public hearing, vets and then and then reports back, um the selectmen have to make the um the uh uh have to have to offer the, or 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 make the recommendation to planning, to to vet. Um and so uh there are two, uh one is the um the amendment um which you have before you, which is um.
The total gross floor area, the special permit in the village business district.
Yes, yes. The second is what the alternative energy commission has already talked to you about, which is the um as-of-right use uh in this case on the on a on a on a landfill property in particular for all of energy, for alternative energy production.
Right.
So you've already, you've already looked at both of them, but the board has to formally um uh refer these to planning for public hearings. They've already teed up, they're actually, they're planning to hold a public hearing, I believe.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, on the on the on the the.
Village Business District one.
They will, and they're not gonna schedule one for March eleventh, I believe is the date for the for the uh the. But you need to formally refer them both, and we have, I I again, we're in a, we're in a, I think you've already talked about the specifics
Mm-hmm.
uh of of these both. And again, you're not really getting up to the merits, it's really a, this is really a process vote, it's like, you're referring them,
Yeah. Mm-hmm, okay.
They hold a public hearing, they come back to you, and they either say, yeah, we're going here, no, we're not.
Okay, so let me see if I have this right, so the first, we we would need a motion to refer the s- um let me see how to say this, to refer the um request for a zoning bylaw change relating to special permits in the village business district to the planning board for a hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the next motion would be to refer to the planning board, the alternative energies um request for bylaw relating to the as-of-right. Tell me what, slightly.
It's actually, it's actually technically, it's the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation overlay district. That's quite a.
Tracy?
It's it's in the law, it's in the, it's in the draft law, it's it's article number nineteen.
Oh, okay. Ar- article number nineteen, okay.
Right.
There you go. So uh the motion would be to um refer the request for um uh a zoning bylaw change relating to the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation overlay district. Is there a motion?
Um second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, that's interesting.
I hope we don't want to hard with accelerators.
I I think there's no discussion, but I um I I have missed, I I've been unable to attend a couple of the um AEC meetings, but um I would like to to thank them for the hard work that they put in putting these two um articles together and the wording and the research, 'cause I know it's taken a lot and um done a good job, as usual.
General Joe, yeah. Okay.
Good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um.
Okay, so next, um just if you wanna kinda give us a a glimpse, did we get any, um on the warrant for May second? Did we get any citizens' provisions other than the one?
I have gotten, I I. One, is it just the same one we talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, so.
Yeah, just that one. And that was the potential sewer extensions?
Correct.
Expansion?
So as of, as of right this minute, we're holding on uh twenty-four article warrant, um which uh which is pretty, pretty small, actually.
Very good.
Um I um there are, there are some that are still, you know, to be determined, and there's a placeholder here. The sewer commission is looking at some bylaw amendments and they 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 um they're still working on that. And that that's being, is this place being held for that right now, I don't have any more details for you. The water rate study is ongoing, so that, by the way, that's number twenty, that's placeholder number twenty-two.
So so that's a March seventeen deadline for them to get that one?
They they need to, they understand where they are, um.
Well, I just, I I just wanna point out that we set deadlines and deadlines are deadlines. I I don't wanna be doing another warrant.
The water rate is highly likely not to be done by now, I mean, the study's not gonna come until later in March. I mean, I'm just, you know, just a process.
Where it is?
The um, they're all racing, they they want to get to this town meeting, so they are making every effort. The other ones, I think you have all the details on.
Just just as point of clarification, uh and I think what Karen's driving at is if we don't enforce them, they're meaningless, so.
Exactly, I mean.
And I, so it's, I I know, as long as, as long as commission understands that the twenty-third is not the twenty-second and I, no, I I I recognize it, I'm.
No, I I recognize it also, but I think that until commissions and boards understand that this board has set a deadline and it means that a deadline is a deadline.
Now, this is ahead of last year, we are substantially ahead of last year in terms of having this, this.
Right.
Um so.
Usually ahead of every year.
We're 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 working uh towards that and um this has been a challenging three, four weeks.
I understand.
Uh with the weather, it's pretty much thrown a, Kim called him like a snow ridge, a snowball into, it's a process.
Somebody has to be the bad cop and I'm happy to do it, because this frustrates the.
I'm happy. It's your warrant, it is, it is, it is the selectman's warrant, I'm just here to make it work.
No, I mean, it it just frustrates the whatever out of me all all the time, um in my previous term and in ongoing and listening to other selectmen talk about the fact that, you know.
I think it's very important that we get keep keep rules, because it isn't just for us. We have to get it to the advisory board and particularly, they have to go through it. Plus, we have to get the printer and we have to get the public to know everything. And if we can't get this and we've given it notice way, way back, there's no reason.
Well.
I I think, I think that this is not, this is not towards you, Chris, because this is, this is what has happened over a lot of years.
Sure.
But I I think also that what has happened is that having the town manager's motions has allowed people to be very lax in presenting information. And I feel very strongly that that is unfair to the people of the town. They deserve to know before they walk into a town meeting what these articles are really about, how much money is being. Um maybe more people would be interested in attending if they realize the enormity of the monies that are are voted here or how the bylaw changes are going to impact them. So when they come in to do a project, they're not all up in arms, they're like, when did this happen? But if we don't tell them, then they they don't know.
Well, to build on what we did, I mean, last fall was the first time we had the manager's motions publicly accessible.
Prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um well, well, the goal is to be even further ahead this time. Again, we're on target, we're we're currently on target for the, you know, we we have an early April deadline to be able to approve prints.
I'm gonna be a real pain in the butt about this. I would like, I mean, ideally, if there were no town manager's motions, that's what I would like. I would like the warrant to be the warrant.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah, well, they have to, you know.
She she wants this to be everything.
This is, what what we have been sending, what we have been sending out before is, and and I understand.
It's an agenda.
It's an agenda.
Yeah.
And it it's meaningless, it has very little information in it. And it's, we might as well send out a postcard that says, you know, he he here, you're 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 notified that town meeting is going to take place and there are gonna be twenty-four articles, because we're not really gonna tell you what's in those articles until you actually come and show up.
Well, I I I think that um there was a real effort made this past fall.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I I practice this by saying, not you.
No, 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 I I I hear you. Right, no, no, uh but I'm, we we've continued to build on on being as transparent as possible, we're posting as much stuff on the web as possible. And again, I do think that, you know, we can't mail everything to everybody, you know, i- i- it's expensive and 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 it's 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 time consuming.
We 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 tried a number of years ago, um to not have to mail it out, but the town meeting voted that they wanted it to be mailed out.
Right.
You know, things, things changing, that may be something we wanna think about again as to being posted on um the website.
Um th- I I I hope to have um as much of a supplemental informational piece to this as possible. I mean, again, remember that there's the fifth technical warrant piece, which isn't gonna change a lot much. Then there's supplemental information which helps people understand it, I think the more of that that's available, the better. And I, we're gonna continue to do as much of that as possible, so, um so I I hear all of you.
Okay, no, it's just me. I don't know if anybody agrees with me and I don't care.
But so this is um, and again, so the, the advisor committee has this as well, they have this document that I think they've already started to tee up. Uh so I you can, I know the alternative energy commission is eager to come in front of advisory, so um that's um these conversations are already being queued up. And again, I I s- this is it, uh now, there's always that possibility of some random last-minute emergent thing coming through. As of the moment, there is nothing that I'm aware of. Uh we still have some big projects that were approved last year, there's still a process, that's dredging, that it's already done, this one approved. Um I'm not aware of anything else of that magnitude at this point. Um again, we we've circulated this as widely as we can, so um I think we've covered all the routine articles in here, I don't think there's anything we're missing. And we'll talk to the council again, uh just to make sure there's nothing.
I know Paul and I will go head to head on this one, but I I feel very strongly about it, obviously.
On uh article fifteen, the elder affairs lease acquisitions, the due diligence report, is that done?
Yeah, um so I have, it has a couple little tweaks that again, uh that have to be made, I I hope to have that out to you, uh it's done. Uh there were a couple little, you know, just little technical things that had to be cleaned up, uh I hope to have that to you uh this week, actually.
Okay, good. So are we gonna be reviewing that on the agenda or?
Do you think we could? Could we do that at next week, do you think?
Yeah.
Okay, put that on the agenda next week.
So that'll be posted, so anybody who wants to come and look at our review.
Yeah, and I'll post the study, I mean, I I I, you know, the study's public, I mean, the the reports are public, so.
Good, so.
Okay, um let's move on to the town manager update.
Okay. Um.
There's, you've dropped a lot of little hits, so.
I did, I did, so I'm gonna go on to, uh I'm gonna start with snow. Um again, I I just really, I really wanna to to really give my deepest thanks to all the town staff who've been so diligent and who have been working so hard uh to keep the town safe and accessible. Uh the DPW have been digging us out again, again, and again, and again. We've had staff members who have been living at the public works yard, their 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 spouses have been bringing them clothes. Um uh but I gotta tell you, I I I I say, go home, and they're like, I'm not leaving, we have work to do. Uh I am grateful that they were able to take some rest yesterday, they look, uh and, but they have been committed. I mean, you know, I I drive by and there's, there's, there's one member digging out uh down by the beach and keeping that uh, keeping that road clear as we use the beach for our snow farm. And then, uh you know, I see our our superintendent, you know, driving along and getting stuff done. Um I wanna thank all the facility staff who've been out there keeping the buildings accessible, uh again, again, and again, again.
Can we keep saying ditto?
Ditto, ditto.
Thanks are from us as well, yeah.
Fire police, fire police, I mean, you know, uh we know they're there, but they've been there and um it's been digging hydrants and going up and down and keeping people safe, it's been an ongoing thing, um it it, people have really stepped up. It's been, it's been an a a historic winter. I wanna thank the residents of this town, who've been so patient, who've been so helpful in helping clear hydrants. I gotta tell you, this hydrant challenge has been an amazing success.
It's been on, like, when I, I think Channel Five News, my mother called me.
And it's been aw, and it's won, gotten wonderful coverage, um and whilst importantly, it's got wonderful results.
N C M.
And well, importantly, it's got wonderful results, I think a hundred and sixty-plus hydrants as of earlier today.
Hundreds, yep. Wonderful.
Two, over two.
I'm blessed with two.
Did you get the iTunes card or the Dunkin' Donuts gift card?
I, my daughter claimed it, it's just not, it's just not.
We have very.
I I didn't send my picture and I thought I could get in trouble for that.
All I have to say, my seventeen-year-old daughter claimed credit, because my seventeen-year-old daughter was out there helping.
Excellent.
Uh it it it's been, I gotta tell you, it really has been, it's been, it's been a fun way for people to really get out there and and help. And uh it's been really, really, really well received. Um I mean, you, you know, the firefighters have done out again and again and again and again. And we've had our, we've had, very gratefully, we've had National Guard troops in a couple of cars and they've helped dig out those hydrants. And they dug it out again and again. Um and again, I I, you know, it was reported today, I was sitting down with Chief Sylvia earlier going over where we were and um he reported that he he heard today that we've received more snow this year than Buffalo. And if you remember, beginning of the season, Buffalo had a brutal storm, they were blanketed, six feet of snow, well, guess what?
Yeah.
Six feet.
We caught them, okay?
Yeah.
I described it the other day as a slow-motion buffalo, that's what we've had.
Mm-hmm.
It's snowed and snow, and it's not melting, it's snow and then snow and snow and snow. Um I'm getting calls from friends, it's 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 like, you know, this this, it's like, you know, watching the car wreck or you're hearing about the accident.
Yeah.
Uh but I gotta tell you, um it's really, it's hard and I and I respect how hard it's been, cabin fever, schools getting back and forth to work. But uh we really appreciate everything the residents have done to help support. Um the public works people, the folks have been grateful for all the thanks and the uh, you know, the the other support that, you know, that people have given, the atta boys and the atta girls and all of that for all of our staff. Um and and I, w- w- we hope for a little more patience, it's only thirty-three days till spring, so uh we're hopeful.
Hey. Catches and catchers.
Catches and catchers.
Exactly, catches and recorded. So uh so one of the unfortunate um impacts of the storm, though, happened this morning at two AM. Uh the sprinkler system at the high school, um there was a break in the line.
Oh.
Uh uh and uh while crews were quickly on the scene and every effort's gonna be made, we expect the building will be fully open on Monday, uh there's been extensive damage to the central office. Uh the classrooms on the first floor, so they were numbered down by the woodshop and the art uh room that that was watered down there, but it was only on the floors, it went down. Um the uh the full extent of that damage is being assessed. It is highly likely the superintendent and her staff will have to be relocated for an an indeterminate amount of time, and we're exploring those options today.
So that's the meeting room that we've lost access to?
Uh the, that also impacted the meeting room. Now, uh uh there's gonna have to be remediation of the ceilings, of the walls, of the floors. It's much worse for the super, in fact, here, I wanna show you a picture, so that's, that's a, that's a picture, uh it's not the color, I'm afraid I don't have a color printer right now.
Oh, no.
So um the um, by the way, Mark, uh Mark Kelly's office was also damaged, just the whole area, finally, the bathrooms were not damaged, the little things, they hit the most water, right? Um so uh we, the insurance adjusters been there, been to the site, um the staff was in today cleaning, that just, you know, uh and I have, I have a copy of that picture for you here if you'd like, so um I can email it to you. So uh uh the the staff was up there today cleaning, this was not what they expected to be doing today. Um so it, they'll be a little bit difficult to communicate with for the next couple of. Um, so it, they'll be a little bit difficult to communicate with for the next couple of days, but we're working on alternative sites. Uh, and one in particular, which we'll talk about more when I update you next week, so uh, but we're working very aggressively. I, I, I was, I was up there a couple of times today, staff was up there all, all morning, uh, the fire department responded obviously because it was a fire, uh, maybe set up the alarms. So, i- i- it was unfortunate, uh, fortunately the, the education area's okay, I think they'll be able to clean that up pretty quickly and dry it up, uh, but the, that office has been significantly watered down, so.
Oh, that's terrible.
Oh, okay.
Um, could I just piggyback on, are you wrapping up your storm updates?
That's, I, I, that's pretty much, yeah, that's the, that's the big update.
Those are more news.
I don't wanna, yeah, well.
Again, I hate to, I mean, the good news is that we're, we're on top of it, uh, the bad news is that it happened, so.
I, I just wanna mention that, uh, just as I was looking at the agenda, I, I got an email, um, sent out to Hangum and Hull Ferry commuters that they do not anticipate Hangum, uh, boats opening this week at all. And they're hoping they can get hull by the end of the week, but it's, you know, the end of the week is maybe Friday, so that's just one day, so, um, it's
It's a disaster.
It, it's, it's really problematic and, um.
The commuter rail, I mean, uh.
And the commuter rail, the commuter rail ran this morning and then didn't run home.
Well, they started the Green Line and stopped it, I don't know what all those, I was wondering all those people did.
The Green Bush line is going to be running from Green Bush to North Situate, so knock it off.
Green Bush.
On time?
Like the Polar Express, so, um, yeah, so you know, everybody, we're, we're all in a very unfortunate situation together and
On time. Back and forth.
Smile at your neighbors.
Are you both running up with your family?
That's, that's.
Can I get a?
Sure.
You know, the town, we have, blessed with the employees, I'm not gonna go over like the DPW, the police, the fire, anything like that. But I do wanna take a moment to thank you, Chris, because you're providing the leadership to help keep all of this together. I think you've done a really good job, you've kept us informed, we've been passing those messages along and it's an awful lot on you and I didn't even know about this water break. And uh, so I just think you're doing a really great job of leading this town and keeping it together during this crisis and I wanna thank you.
Yeah.
Here, here, man.
I, 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 can I add to that, because I said last week, um, that I was gonna do it this week, cause last week we weren't on TV, but I, I had a call from two different people in town and they're not the typical people that usually call me, they work for the town. Um, and they wanted to commend Chris on what a, uh, what an amazing job he's done, just reaching out, bringing soup, you know, really, um,
That's right.
treating employees the way they deserve to be treated and everybody's working hard and you're working harder and setting that leadership example too, so, same thing. But I'm, I'm hearing it from those you manage and that's even better, so.
I appreciate that, and again, I appreciate the staff who've been giving their all.
Thank you.
I think I have two steps to driving a sand, I think Carl is gonna take me up on my offer at some point, buy the truck. I may not wanna be on the road when I'm driving.
To move to the Bahamas, that offer?
No, 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 driving a Sando, so, no, I've been offering trucks.
Ah.
Oh, you haven't had your training yet?
No, 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 pretty close.
You know what, start with the front and longer.
Yeah. I watch out for those Bobcats actually.
We need an HR director in our risk management policy before you do that, please, um, okay.
But spring, again, spring is coming.
I know, it's, you keep saying that.
You know?
And then it snows again.
If we, if we keep believing it, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen.
It will, it will.
Okay, um, okay, um, we have, uh, we have a bunch of, uh, five sets of minutes and then we're gonna go into an executive session. Um.
We have one, um. Copy not previously, I have this from Kevin.
Oh, right.
Okay, and is that the one to, to participate on the, um, water study?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
No, no, the water study, it's.
Water, uh.
Water bid.
Water.
Either water, the, the.
For Karen.
Oh, the bid for the contract, the operation on services, okay.
Yeah, operation, contract, operations, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, um, um, Kevin's liaison, is there a motion to, um, make Kevin, um, the liaison to?
I move that we nominate Kevin to be the liaison to the, uh, uh, to the RFP for water operations.
The water operations. Oh, second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Um, just really quickly, because I wasn't here during select and update, cause it took me two and a half hours to get home from Boston tonight.
Whoa, how did you do that?
It was not pleasant.
A lot of time too, roads are great.
And I, I like started crying on the way home, I just thought this is just terrible. Um, but I, I just, um, wanted to read, um, we did receive a letter, um, we received a copy of a letter that was sent by Charlie Humphreys to Carl Sestito. Um, I wanna express my sincere, sincere thanks to you and your department and particularly Kent Thayer for your efforts in clearing and sanding the roads in the Newtonville area this past weekend. Um, my house was out of oil and the oil dealer could not have assessed my property without your special efforts. My wife and I greatly appreciate you and your department dedication to serving the community during this difficult period. I don't think you can ever say thank you too much, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so moving right along, um, the first set of minutes we have are from January sixth. And I'm just pulling them out, I had a couple of minor edits on most of them.
Yeah, I have Marilyn Keen, it's not King, K E A N E, lady of Selectment Comments.
What's her name, Martha?
Marilyn King, it's.
Keen.
Her name's Keen?
Keen, K E A N E.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of the minutes, Tracy?
Yeah, yeah, I got them, I'm on.
Okay, um, um, that first sentence under Selectment Comments.
Yep.
It's just a little bit of a misplaced modifier, so I think we can end the sentence after, on the third line, after abuse crisis. Cause it said the, on today's substance abuse crisis at the Cohasset High School auditorium, it's.
Yep. Oh, yep, yep.
It was, the meeting was, not the crisis. Um, under Police Chief Search, um, the second sentence at the end, the second line at the end, he expects the process to take approximately three months. Um. And that was it. They didn't have any other changes? I think that is the minutes of the sixth.
Um, under Town Managers Update, the first line.
Just need to get the, the.
The word the, I think it should be that, or, I mean.
That, Jim, ours.
Yeah.
I just, I always wanna make a, just a general observation, all these minutes didn't look like they were quite the diet, I thought we were putting them on.
Yeah, I, I have the same impression, Kevin.
Do you have a similar impression?
Okay, so.
There's, there's, there's people saying stuff we don't, you know, need.
Wait, yeah.
No, 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 so did, what about like the, let me just say the tenth, because I think it was starting the third, cause when we discussed it, I already had these minutes done.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's right, yeah, all right.
All right, just so you got the.
No, I totally do.
And you didn't wanna know them twice? And weight, uh, weight loss takes a while.
Well, I did mention that actually and she said, don't bother, cause they were already done.
Yeah, right. Not a problem, as long as it's just.
Uh, but no, yeah.
Cause there's a lot of organizations we don't need.
Okay, so the next set is the.
Do you wanna?
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, um, is there a motion to approve January sixth with the edits?
So, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Tracy. Uh, the next set is January thirteenth.
I, I thought under the update on the FY sixteen budget, in the second, I thought that Chris Smith, that it, he had, that it left some wiggle room rather than, that it left very little wiggle room. I mean, that goes in lines.
Left little.
That it may leave, leave a little.
Chris, it, what it says.
Yeah.
It says Chris spoke, well, Mr. Senior spoke of a couple of unexpected retirements in the town that may leave very little wiggle room.
I know what you mean though, it is, it's worded wrong.
It's, it, which she's suggesting is that it should say that it will leave a little wiggle room.
I, I, I think he's. Or.
Yeah, a little.
Yeah, whi- whi- which, which step, sorry, I'm, I'm.
Wait a minute.
The thirteenth.
I mean, I, I don't know whether you meant like, you didn't, I don't know whether you were talking about the budget or you were talking about manpower.
No, that's, I.
Yeah. I mean, if you're talking about manpower, then it's correct, but talking about budget, then it's not correct, yeah, I think.
No, I, I think it may leave wiggle rooms, I guess, that may leave wiggle room, not very much.
Yes, okay.
Ah, little wiggle room, instead of very.
Yes, yes, A, yes, A is, yes.
Okay.
Cause I just, I just told you the same thing.
Yes, exactly. The same words.
Pretty much.
Any other changes?
Same on message.
Okay, is there a motion to approve January thirteenth minutes as amended?
I move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm nothing. Next set of minutes are January twentieth. Um, in the event application, Social Arts Festival, um, Sarah Hanan is spelled with an A at the end, so Han Nan. And it's three times, the first line and then like the fourth, the fifth line, it's twice.
Okay. H E N A N A, A N, what's that?
A N, yeah.
Yep.
And then, um, in the bold at the very end of that motion, I guess, um, uh, right before it says Selectman Martha, it, it should say has taken place. And, and then, I just had a question, cause it was two different ways on Mr. Sajans, however it's pronounced, first name.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Is it I A N D E R or is it I N D E R? If you could check that, cause in the next set of minutes.
I'll, I'll check it, cause in the next set of minutes, it's, cause Jen did these and I did the next, so I don't know, I'll check.
Okay. All right, that explains that.
Yes, I'll check that.
Um, on the top of page two, one January twentieth, um, alternate, yeah.
Alternate? I saw that, yeah.
Um, second paragraph, last word, Coveney, I believe has an E, N E Y.
Hmm, what's your paragraph? Oh, okay.
Yep, and then down further under Event Application, um, uh, so it says Mr. Wigmore's contributions not only to this event should be a comma and, l- instead of a semicolon, and right above that, Gomer is spelled incorrectly, you didn't pick that up? You're not, you're not reading every word?
I, you know what, I grew up with people calling me Gomer, if you, you know.
Your minutes? So it's G U A R D.
They spell my name, it's, you know, it's, it's minor.
On page three, on.
Who was his name, oh, I see, okay.
In the middle, yeah.
Who was that guy?
Who, who, what's he, what's his name? On, uh, page three, under Discuss Future Appointments, uh, the second line, she said that the open space and recreation, T I O N.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, okay. Um, that's it, anybody else?
Oh, um, uh, on page, the Selectment Update, oh, it said that, uh, the Selectment Espy said that she and, so, she is missing.
Yeah, she and McCarthy. Was concerned about that too.
All right.
We had a good time though.
Oh, yes, we always have a good time.
We do.
I missed, I missed that rock, it's one, ooh, boy. Um, is there a motion to approve as amended the minutes from January twentieth?
Go.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
No votes.
Yeah, s- so four, nothing?
Four.
Um, next set of minutes are from February third.
Oh, four, nothing.
Um.
Be four oh one, wouldn't it? Sorry, can we have the four oh one? Four oh one abstaining.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, yeah, four zero one.
Stay, stay, yeah, abstaining.
Um. Um, under Selectment Update, like, almost all the way to the bottom, maybe five lines up, it says she asked if any residents are able to shovel out a fire hydrant in their neighborhood. It would be very helpful. And then again, we have that Mr. Sajans name, uh, under public hearing.
Yeah, I'll check that.
Um. I think that's it, I, let me double check on Deb Beal's, I don't know that she has an E at the end of her name. I'm gonna check that, does anybody else have any changes?
Oh, and the triathlon, Selectman Kennedy asked, sent up, that was, sent up, Clark and McCarthy. Little big deal.
Where are you going here, are we?
Youth try.
It makes us up all the time.
And the Cohasset Youth Triumph.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, Kennedy, he's getting credit for my, uh, great idea.
For your brilliance. I'm the chairman, I can do that.
Part to send out the flyers, you mean?
Sending them out.
Yeah, it was a flyer matter, yeah, I don't want any, any, yeah.
Okay. You?
What?
I read these things.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, Deb Beal is spelled without an E at the end of Beal.
Okay.
E, E. All right, any other changes on February third? Is there a motion to approve them as amended?
Go.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, five zero.
As amended.
And lastly, is February tenth, um.
Yeah, this is a good one.
That's why I started this.
Yeah, you could see the, the diet is beginning to set in.
The other ones were done before that.
Um, um, yep, no changes.
Yeah, no changes.
Of course, that was a good meeting, it was about a half hour long too.
Yeah, it helps still.
Um.
Okay, I move.
Okay, second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we have those approved.
That's.
Three seven two?
As, yes.
Yep.
Three.
Three zero two. All right, we're done.
And we don't have tonight's meetings and we're gonna move on, I don't know.
So we're done, we're caught up, Martha, thank God.
Yeah, totally caught up.
All right. I'm well. Okay, um, we are done with our agenda for the evening, other than, um, a roll call vote to enter into executive session. Um, we are entering into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations. Really okay? For negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And also Section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town and the chair so declares, I do so declare. The board will discuss current ongoing contract negotiations with all the various bargaining units and healthcare coverage for all employees. Uh, I will take a roll call vote, Kevin?
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Steve Gomer, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye, Karen Quigley, aye.
Martha, yes to be, aye.
Okay, we're in executive session, thank you. I'm gonna just.